Call the question.
All right, we're good. We are good to go.
I think someone just moved in a second. Good evening. Welcome to the Oregon City Planning Commission meeting for January 28th. And I'd like to welcome you all here. Are there any comments from the public this evening? Mr. Edgar, would you like to come forward, please?
Aren't you going to call roll first?
You're all here.
Except for this one.
And the other one.
And the other one. I don't think we call roll, so.
We don't usually. Just during the vote.
No, only during the vote.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Paul Edgar. I'm a citizen of Oregon City. I'm the land use chair of the Kanema Neighborhood Association and the land use chair of the CIC area represented downtown. Also, I'm on the Clackamas County Transportation Advisory Committee, and I'm an urban renewal commissioner. The reason why I'm before you today is about passenger rail, high-speed passenger rail coming through Oregon City. Probably, a high probability that incrementally, over a period of about 30 years, we'll see significant changes in opportunities that will arise as to how we think about it, address it, how we plan it, and how we get ahead of it. We've got to know what it means and how it's going to affect us. High odds are that these two new trains that are going to be coming into service shortly will be interchanging trains that we have had on rent or lease from the state of Washington. They'll go back to the state of Washington. We will have two new ones, and the plan is to increase passenger rail service dramatically through the Portland-Vancouver area all the way to Seattle. So what does that mean to us and to the existing tracks? Right now, you'll see a track, two rails, going through Oregon City and a lot through Kanema. Those tracks are not the types of tracks that they're going to run any higher-speed passenger rail on. They're going to need to upgrade those tracks, and probably the smartest thing they can do, and odds are again, and I'm not an engineer or something, but I've been spending some time talking to them, that they will be wanting to build, put in a couple extra tracks, at least another pair, right away. Because it's the cheapest way, and it gets around all of their dealings that they'll have with Union Pacific. So how do we accomplish that, and what does that mean? You know, we, obviously, we have a rail station out here. Urban renewal has got probably $3 million tied up in it right now. And we'd love to get some type of return on investment on it and have it be an asset to the city. And it may well be, but for how long, who knows? From what people say is that the long-term plan, most people seem to envision, and seems to be coming from the governor, is that they want to put the eventual high-speed rail line up and down the I-5 corridor. They think it's safe, it's got the corridor, it's got the overpasses and the right-of-ways and things like this. So how do they get to it? And how do they come up with the billions and billions and billions of dollars to make that happen? That's what delays and makes Oregon City really in the play. Because it means coming up with those dollars that is necessary to make some of those things happen over, make the master plan dream come true, just isn't going to happen overnight. And even at that, we, right now, have the south station, and probably will end up a south station, maybe not an express line, but more the milk line. Milk stops, and they'll come through. So, but in Kanema, we're a national register district. So you go through this area, and if we have to start taking out First Street and a whole run of houses down Kanema, there's a plat over there, it's got 1865 on it.
I'm sorry. I turned off the buzzer, but the three minutes ran probably a minute and a half ago. It's certainly at your discretion, but.
Allow him to finish his.
Everybody okay with it?
Oh, yeah.
Within reason.
Okay. You know, it's still, as a representative of, coming in before you as a land use chair.
Don't worry, just keep going.
Okay. But anyway, if you come through, if you're coming through Kanema like that, you're going to take out a lot of historic houses. And that has significant ramifications, not only to our neighborhood, but it also makes those people who have boathouses down on the Willamette River, and people who need to have access to that, across those railroad tracks, problematic. Also, we have the problems of just how fast can these trains go, and will they be walling up some of this? Will they need to put up some walls to try to make it safer for higher speeds? So this is also true in coming through Oregon City, the main part through downtown. What are we going to do? My thinking is, is that we really need to seriously take a look at getting some real expertise on board that understands this, that are representing the interests of Oregon City and its neighborhoods. And I think we need to press to make that happen. Right now, Mayor Ferguson of Milwaukee has been appointed to chair this oversight for this area. We should have somebody on that committee. I asked Mayor Neely if he didn't have anyone identified. I wouldn't mind sitting on it, primarily because I know the vested interests of a lot of the people, and I'm not, I know what's going to happen. Now, the next question is being pragmatic, and thinking it through, and making sure that the values of our city are being represented, the values of the neighborhoods are being represented, and that we are, we're coming out of this in a win-win. And it's going to take people there really trying to think it out. See, down the line, I'm a proponent, a strong proponent, of heavy rail. I believe that heavy rail is the long-term technical thing that we're going to need to have to make freight mobility and our ability to be competitive in this area viable. So when we start trying to put a higher degree of frequency of passenger rail against heavy rail, freight rail, we're getting into trouble. We need them both. We just need them both, and we're going to have to think smart through making that happen. See, I see as an example, we could put, we have this area just south of us in the Kanema Bowl. In the long haul, I would love to see that thought out as an area that could be an industrial area. There's not a lot of area, but talking with Metro, they're willing to give us anything we want virtually there to augment it, and it's in the UGB a lot. There's a nice chunk, and we could be putting a railroad spur into it. This is also an area where we see Butel Road potentially being extended out of, from the hilltop down into the middle of the Kanema Bowl. And I've walked that, and it's only about a half a mile.
Paul, excuse me, did we just go from light rail, we're talking about something else?
I'm talking about how, if we get heavy rail into the bowl, south of Kanema, that can be a feeder area to a lot of things. And so it's just an important, just an important area where we need to be able to be thinking. Long haul, we've got to be thinking about these things and how they affect creating jobs. And I've wanted to come and talk sometime about this important thing of creating jobs and economic development here, but we can't have a situation where we have 80% of our people commuting out of town to find employment. And we've got to reverse that, and it has an effect upon all of us. So I would talk more, but I would ask sometime, if we could ever get onto the agenda, I'd like to have a time to get onto the agenda and talk about economic development, industrial lands, because I think that there's, we've got to do some things. I've been part in parties with people coming up and looking at Beaver Creek Road and what they thought, and many, I have not had one single person, economic development or industrial person, look at it and tell me that he felt it was a good site for industrial lands. And so somewhere along the line, if we don't solve some of this and start thinking and planning together, then we're in trouble. Anyway, I'm in, I'm just trying to promote some positive thinking and open dialogue, and hope that it happens. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? And by the way, we don't bite, so why is everybody sitting in the back row? I mean, this is between us and them, so we can't get you anyway.
This is not our church. You can come up front.
All right. Tony, are we ready to move on to our next item? And this is a legislative item. So do we need to go through the disclaimers?
Legislative, please.
Make sure this is on. It is legislative, so, you know, the three things you normally have to worry about: conflict of interest, bias, and ex parte contacts. You only really have to worry about one of them. Bias, because it's a legislative agenda, you've been appointed to the Planning Commission for your biases, because the City Commission believes that you have a point of view that is needed on the Planning Commission, so you should be biased in these types of things. Ex parte contacts also are not a concern. This isn't a legislative, this is not a quasi-judicial matter where you have your judge hat on. This is a legislative one, where you're representing people, and people are allowed to come and talk to you. However, conflict of interest is still an issue in legislative matters. And in particular, the Oregon statutes identify potential and actual conflict of interest. And it essentially does, the concern that you should have is whether this has a financial benefit or detriment to you or members of your family. For example, this legislative, this legislative change is not a good example, because it's procedural. It's going to affect pretty much everybody. But there may be a situation where you have a property that's zoned, you know, C2, and you happen to own property that's C2, and, you know, adding uses and increases the value of your property. That's most likely a potential conflict of interest. It's waivable, because you're in what's known as a class of people who all have the same problem. So with that, you don't have the normal 197763 discussion of things, because that specifically applies to legislative matters, I mean, to quasi-judicial matters. But as a legislative matter, you do still need to be concerned about conflict of interest. But as I mentioned, unless you have a specific appeal going on at this point or something, you're probably not going to have a conflict with the, with what's proposed here.
So I guess I'll start off with saying, I believe I have no conflict, since I have no appeals before the board, nor do I anticipate filing to become the hearings officer and economically benefit from the position.
Since we aren't considering that.
Well, it's about the hearings officer.
Oh, it's this word, is it?
This one is it?
Tom, can you help Tom get his online there? So just for the record, I will ask if any of the planning commissioners have received phone calls from the public or anyone else regarding this legislative matter, or do they have any conflicts of interest with regard to this particular matter?
None here.
I don't, nobody called me about it?
No.
I assure you.
Nobody knows I exist yet.
Okay. That makes it very easy. So I don't, do or do not have to read the disclaimers? Okay. Well, I will go ahead and open the public hearing and ask our able-bodied staff person to go through his report, please.
Thank you. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing on December 10, 2012, to discuss this legislative action that staff brought forward. And then we continued the public hearing to tonight. In between then, we took this information to the City Commission in a work session. And originally, the major, largest change would have been the introduction of a hearings officer as an option for the City Commission, should they so choose to use it. During the work session, they decided that that wasn't a tool that they were interested in pursuing. So we've removed that proposal from this legislative amendment to Chapter 1750, which is our administrative section of the Oregon City Municipal Code. So the two, essentially, the two changes that we are requesting that the Planning Commission consider, and if they do recommend approval, send it up to the City Commission for their consideration on February 20th, is that currently, a Type II decision, which is made by staff, under the current code, standing to appeals limited to those parties who submitted written comments during the 14-day comment period. We are requesting that in order to be consistent with the Oregon revised statutes, that we add additional language consistent with what the ORS says, essentially conferring standing on anyone who not only participated in writing, but anyone who is adversely affected or aggrieved by the decision, which would include those individuals who submitted written comments. They would then have the right to appeal that decision of the staff. Furthermore, we request the additional change requires that the appeal of a Type II decision, essentially of the Community Development Director. Currently, the way our code is written is that if I issue a decision on, let's say, a Type II subdivision, it's appealed to the City Commission. It's an on-the-record appeal, meaning no new evidence, no new arguments can be made. We are requesting that that, in order to be consistent with ORS, that appeals of the decision of the Community Development Director be heard de novo. Essentially, they get a, since it's the first evidentiary hearing, rather than, the Type II was a certain amount of time to submit only written comments. There was no actual public hearing. The appeal would be the first evidentiary hearing, so that would be a de novo. Essentially, anything could be brought in, new arguments, new evidence, on that appeal in front of the City Commission. And both of these changes we're requesting are to be consistent with the Oregon revised statutes. And as I stated earlier, all reference to the hearings officer have been removed from this proposed change.
Are there any questions?
Looking at your staff report, I have a question about, A, your footnote, footers on each page, which is a reference to the reduction of Planning Commission members, L1002, Planning Commission hearing date, March 22, 2010.
He didn't do this report, by the way.
And we've been working on it for a long time.
And your recommendation is that we approve it for the City Commission's consideration on their January 16 public hearing, which has already gone by.
I apologize. We did not update that.
You mentioned earlier about those Planning Commission members that aren't here. Well, that's kind of.
That's the reduction.
That's the reduction of, it's the RPC Act.
I thought that was.
Other than those two corrections, I actually, I don't have a problem with the other issues. But those, you know, if it's going to be the document, it probably should have those two things corrected.
We will get those corrected tomorrow.
Robert, do you have a question?
I've got a question. Why not just refer back to, or up to the Planning Commission rather than bypass the Commission?
Well, I think, just from a timeline standpoint of the 120-day in issuing a decision, essentially, the appeal would be the city's, the City Commission makes the city's final decision. So eventually, it would have to get there. So even if staff made the decision, the appeal went to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission would still have to, I imagine, have a de novo hearing, because it'd be the first evidentiary hearing. Then that decision could essentially be, probably be appealed to the City Commission, which would then be on the record. It's just you're adding, you know, at minimum, one additional hearing in between there, if not more.
And not just additional hearings, but notices and opportunities to continue, and, you know, the statutes require 120, the decision be made within 120 days, and you, you know, with a, I believe, a 20-day minimum notice period, 21-day open record period, you're eating up about half the, you know, or a third of the time right there for that hearing.
So you're comfortable with the Commission saying that, what's the Planning Commission think about this? That you're comfortable, that they're going to be comfortable?
Yeah. I mean, you know, essentially, Type II decisions have the least amount of discretion. You know, these should be clear and objective standards when you're dealing with residential or site plan design review, you know, have, you know, it's not like a zone change or a conditional use. I'm a little bit more comfortable that, you know, we have standards that are much more clear than you would on a Planning Commission decision.
Tony, just because this is televised, right? So for those who don't understand, and just to refresh my memory, maybe in a sentence or two, could you explain a Type II decision?
Two decision is a decision that's made by the Community Development Director. Essentially, those approval criteria are what we consider more clear and objective. They're things that can be measured, or like transparency, like the 60% of the frontage needs to be transparent. You can measure that, and so it's clear and objective.
Okay.
So that's what's considered a Type II, traditionally, a partition, a subdivision, a site plan design review, where we have very clear standards. Type threes are what come in front of the Planning Commission, and those require more discretion, you know. Is it consistent with the neighborhood? Will it have an impact on the neighborhood? Those things that you can't really measure very well, and require some decision is taken from the Community Development Director to the Planning Commission.
Okay, thanks. The other thing I wanted to ask, again, becoming familiar with this, I note that under two facts, A, public comment, that you put this, according to this, you put it out in the Clackamas Review, the Oregonian email to the Citizens of Volmec Council, and so we didn't have a lot of big turnout, no controversy over it, so it looks like the citizens aren't too overly excited about this, so.
This is really procedural.
Procedural, that's what I was saying.
In other words, it's housekeeping.
It really is.
And that's what I was, we're leading, because I know last week, or two weeks ago, we had someone said we should have known about it, but it shows right here, you did all the steps up to this.
Correct.
Correct. That's why I wanted to clarify. Thanks.
Well, my question involves, just for the, for the record, how would somebody go about showing that they are adversely affected or aggrieved?
I can't wait to find out.
I know. I really, honestly, I really think I know, but I think it might be, it might behoove, if somebody's out there in our listening audience, or viewing audience, might want to know.
One thing I might point out is, Luba's made clear that it believes that anybody within sight and sound of wherever the proposal occurs is considered adversely affected or aggrieved. You may well be able to make that argument about other situations. It really is going to depend on the topic. And, you know, there's certain things that Luba and the courts have said, yep, you're adversely affected or aggrieved here, or you're not over there.
Do they have to show that in their, if I, let's use myself as an example. Something happens, it's a Type II, in my submittal to the governing body, I make statements about how I am aggrieved or affected. Would that be appropriate?
Yes, I think that would be very helpful to put that in there. I don't know if it's absolutely required, but, boy, if I were going to, if I were appealing it, I would include that, just so I didn't have to deal with that, because almost certainly, if the applicant will certainly be aware of the appeal and be involved, and probably point that out at some point.
They would need to help. It would help them further make their case, is what you're suggesting.
Yes.
And then my only other comment is, I am, I have a subscription to the Oregon City News, and I'm assuming that we're putting it in, even though we know they're all kind of the same paper in a lot of ways, but there are different things in the Clackamas Review than there are in the Oregon City News. So I'm hoping we are putting our ads in the Oregon City News. Because the Clackamas Review, if you go to the grocery store or the mailbox, boxes that they have around town, there are no Clackamas Reviews in Oregon City. It's all Oregon City News boxes. And you can get the Clackamas Review in Milwaukee.
We'll double-check on which version it's going.
I mean, I know it goes to the same office, but I suspect it's not going to be in the in the review, the Clackamas, I mean, the Clackamas Review. It would probably be in the Oregon City News.
Do these things show up on the city's website as public hearings?
Yep.
But people have to check in. They have to be aware of that, right?
Correct.
But it's still, whose responsibility then?
Theirs.
The public's or the city's? We can't contact everybody.
Right. And by statute, we're required to.
Make a good.
Put it in the paper, but we also take the step to post it online, send an email to the CIC and the Neighborhood Association. So we've taken some additional steps.
Is it still posted at the senior center?
Pioneer Center, you mean?
The Oregon City Pioneer Community Center. And we used to have it posted at the library, and there used to be, there used to be one over on that kiosk by the elevator that stuff got posted on.
You know, I think we've stopped mailing them out, so it gets sent. I'm going to have to double-check and see if they're printing off the agenda and posting it or not.
Yeah, I know that in, going into.
We used to send the whole packet.
Yeah, I mean, just, I know that the last time I was in the library, I saw a notice that had been posted on the bulletin board, and if someone would care to walk up and see it, it is there. Otherwise, you know, they don't have to look at it. Tony, do we have any comments, Luba?
Mr. Gifford.
You know the drill.
My name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. Great minds run in the same direction, apparently. Commissioner McGriff actually answered, or asked, pretty much the same questions that I had. Mine was a little different take, and that is, if one considers themselves adversely affected, is there a burden of proof issue there at all?
Probably. The general nature of adversely affected, there's some state law on it, and we're essentially, the statute requires this. And as a general rule, in legal matters, the person who is a proponent of a particular position typically carries a burden of proof. And so if you're saying, hey, I'm adversely affected or aggrieved, and I want to appeal this.
Say, show me.
Yes. And, you know, it becomes a substantial evidence question, which is another, you know, technical term that essentially means evidence that a reasonable person would rely on. And so if you can bring in something and say, I'm adversely affected, you know.
Photograph from your living window.
Photograph from the living window, or even a saying, I live at 2416, and this is at 2418, you know, a statement is really sufficient. You know, you don't necessarily need to have glossy photographs and, you know, but you should have some type of evidence.
Thanks for the clarification.
That's the only comment card that I have.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would be interested in talking to us about this proposed amendment? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask the Planning Commission for their comments and deliberation, if I may, please.
I move approval.
Second. I second.
Is there any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Would you call for the question, Mr. Conklin? Call the roll.
Commissioner Guile.
Yes.
And Commissioner Mahoney?
Yes.
Commissioner, maybe?
Aye.
And Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So that will be going to the City Commission for their consideration on February 20, 2013.
Great.
I guess I should say, as amended.
Yes. Yes, I guess so. All right. Next agenda item, please. I'll give you a few more minutes here. I think my document decided it did not want to open.
Yeah, you got to close it.
Close it. Yeah. That's all right. I read it.
Trying to just, like.
Yeah, I don't think it will, unfortunately, which is kind of a bummer.
All the way up or nothing.
We were trying to make our document bigger on our screen, and apparently, it won't let us do that. Oh, wait a minute.
It's pretty small.
Lauren, can you hit the expand?
Will it do it?
Yeah. The problem is closing it afterward.
Oh, there you go.
This is Planning File CP 1201 and DP 1201, a concept master plan and detailed development plan for the Red Soil site. This was brought before the Planning Commission.
This was brought before the Planning Commission, and it was continued to tonight's hearing in reviewing and going over the information with the applicant. They have requested that the meeting be continued, public hearing be continued to February 25th, 2013, to allow additional time to work on the outstanding issues, specifically the fencing material, height and size around the Silver Oaks building for their fence. In addition to the request for the continuance, they have granted an extension of the 120-day to April 30th, 2013.
All right.
We are entering in the email from Ms. Epstein, the representative of the county on the Red Soils Master Plan as Exhibit Number One, requesting that the hearing date be continued to February 25th and the extension of the 120-day.
Okay. So just for the record, you got that, William?
Does that come back next month?
Yes.
We can certainly keep, you know, invite those who wish to come and testify tonight, they can certainly come up and testify if they so choose, but we will keep the record open to that date.
Is there anybody that would like to speak on this?
Twelve-foot fence? Yes. Yeah, I will.
Come on up. Did you fill out a card?
Yes.
Okay, Tony has it?
I do.
I'm in Wausau, two blocks away from the Silver Oaks building. I think a 12-foot fence is ridiculous, extreme, and in excess.
Anything more to add to that?
Let that sink in. We don't want a 12-foot fence in our neighborhood. Let's find another, you know, option. Six foot's plenty. I don't know, there's going to be cameras. It's a cop shop, it's not like people want to break into cop shops. A 12-foot fence is in excess, and I'm voting against it.
Okay.
One other comment along this, I heard in the last meeting that she was saying, there's an option where the fence will be, either inside or outside the curb. Definitely keep it in the parking, on the asphalt, there's cedar trees, there's a hedge, there's sprinkler systems. There's no reason to go through and tear up all the agriculture, when there was an option, have it just two feet inside the curb on the asphalt.
Okay, great.
That should be the solution, and just, what is growing, leave it there.
Okay.
Please.
Okay, thank you. You know, they're requesting a variation to the code to allow for that, so the burden of proof is on them to say why it should be 12 feet.
Well, I just hear that nothing's set in stone, that there's options, and let's make a local decision, rather than listening to suggestions from Homeland Security.
Right.
Do we deal with them? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mr. Gifford?
Gifford again, still in Oregon City. Just for the record, I want to make sure that it's clear that I had not met the speakers, the previous speaker, before I saw him in the lobby tonight, this was not a setup.
But doesn't matter if it is or not.
I agree, I agree, I just wanted to make sure that the record is clear, that he unfortunately had not attended our Neighborhood Association meeting, where we came to the same conclusion, that we really don't want a 12-foot fence, especially alongside a pedestrian walkway in that neighborhood. So, just to be clear, and I guess we'll be back again the 25th, unless they postpone it again.
Okay.
I hope that it isn't just a technique that they're using to see if we will continue to show up or not, because we will.
And you're already on the record, so...
Yeah, so, and you can, you know, it's, it'll be on the website if it's, something new happens, everybody, you know, at least those of us checking our computers will know.
Okay.
Everybody's got a technique, everybody.
Oh, yeah. And some, some have agendas.
So who cares? We recognize techniques.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this matter this evening?
Those are the only two that I have.
Okay, all right, well, then we'll close it for the discussion by the Commission.
We're leaving the...
Yeah, we're leaving the record open.
Okay.
Yes, but we are, we need to act on the continuance.
Right. But we're going to close it, we're just going to act on the continuance.
All right, well, we're just closing our, that part, and the record's open, we're going to talk.
I just want to make sure that we don't accidentally do something bad.
No, we didn't accidentally do it.
But I see no difficulty with the continuation, they're extending the date, and the neighborhood is notified, and they're also already on record, so I move approval to continuation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion?
Continue with the public record open till February 25th, 2013.
That's what you said, that's what you're saying?
That's exactly what I said.
Okay, I caught that.
Must have heard it.
I don't think...
I was just clarifying what I heard.
Yeah, yeah, I, there was feedback on my mic, I didn't really, I didn't hear that, yeah. All right, so we are...
Well, we haven't voted.
Yes, I was just calling for the question.
I apologize.
Asking for the vote.
What was the motion again? Just kidding.
Was that seconded?
Yes, it was seconded by Tom.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mahoney?
Aye.
Commissioner Guile?
Aye, yes.
Commissioner, maybe?
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff?
Aye.
All right, most passes, thank you.
Again, the record is still open, it's continued to February 25th, and we'll see you there next time. Did you have a question?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, you need to come on up since we're on TV here.
Come on up, come on up, Ken.
Thanks.
We just like seeing everybody.
In the Silver Oaks building, what portion of that building will the evidence, is it the further, the west end of it?
That they're looking at putting the 12-foot fence around?
Yeah.
We don't know specifically where things are going to be located in the building, we know that the evidence material will be in the building, and there will be some parking in the building, but they were not, I don't really know if they have to give...
And maybe, maybe I can talk, since we've already closed.
Yeah, he's just, we're just asking a question.
Yeah.
I was just curious, because the east end is vacant, and the west end closest to the jail, I'm not sure what's in there.
They're taken.
Just curious where they're going.
Yeah.
Tony?
I have to go back and look to see what the specifics, if we have an interior layout for use.
I looked through my stuff, and I did not see anything specifically, they just mentioned in the...
There was some generalities about...
Yes, because why would they say right out loud where it's going to be exactly in the building?
And the bricks of complicated money will be at this location, if you're digging a tunnel.
Yeah, so I think that they're, I think that they're dealing with issues of internal security by generally telling us what will be going in the building, but not specifically where it will be in the building.
Yes.
Consider the whole thing evidence, I guess, everything in there will be something.
So for communication, I'm sorry, we, I can, I can talk when we're done, we can't have this free dialogue on a file that we're actually hearing on, please.
We're done with that hearing.
Yes, I'll be happy to talk with you when we're done here in a minute.
Thank you, Ken.
So communications, tomorrow, we are taking the State Parks and Recreation Commission out to Blue Heron for a tour of the site, they are also holding their hearings here in Oregon City on Wednesday, so that's going to be quite a big group that we're going to be out in the rain, I'm sure, going through the site, it's a relatively quick tour, it's about from 9:00 to a little bit before 11:00 o'clock, so we have that planned.
It's much nicer if it's not raining.
It definitely, we said we're happy at least it's not 38 out, you know, we can live with 45 in rain. South End Concept Plan, those meetings are still ongoing, we're still continuing on with that process. We're also about to begin the land use process for the Transportation System Plan update, so we will beginning, be beginning work sessions on those, we imagine, work sessions with the PC, with the Planning Commission, with the City Commission, and probably a joint work session between the Planning Commission and the City Commission as we move through that adoption process. Our goal is to try and get it adopted by July 1st of this year, so...
Do you have any idea when we might, when are you anticipating that we might have, be scheduling those?
I believe it was end of March, yeah, early April, we're doing the pre-app for it tomorrow, and then they'll probably turn around, I mean, we've been working with the consultant, obviously, on this work, so it's in pretty good shape, from the staff level to start moving stuff forward for the consideration and discussion here. So we will get that going as quick as we can, we realize, you know, we're kind of running out of time here to try and get this done by July 1st.
Well, I know, it doesn't affect me as much anymore, but I know that near the end of March is obviously spring break.
Really, yeah.
And that's one of the things we do run into.
Yes.
And I don't know how many Mondays there are in March, because I don't have my calendar out, but if there are five, we're safe, if there's four, we're...
I think we're, we were looking at that as well.
We'll probably be stuck.
Yeah, trying to schedule around that. We actually did last week a pre-application meeting with Walmart again, I think this is our third one probably in the last year and a half, for the property up across from Safeway at Malala, Malala Beaver Creek. So, at this point, we don't have an application in, if we do, it's most likely going to be at a minimum a conditional use for some of the drive-throughs, if not a master plan on that property, so that would be coming, be in front of the Planning Commission, if they do submit that application.
This is still the younger property?
Yes. Yes. There is a, and I just wanted to clarify, are any of the commissioners receiving emails from an anti-Walmart in Oregon City website? Okay.
Nope.
If you do, the website's been set up, and right now, it's sending it to the City Commissioners and myself, so if you do start to receive those, we would recommend that you just create a file to put those into, to archive them, or send them to me, and we will process them appropriately once we get to the hearing, if we ever do, so...
I have something to report.
Okay.
It's on the cat, so...
Okay, great.
The citizen advisory team, we've actually requested Steve Fouse get a t-shirt that says, "I'm a cat," or "I'm in the cat," something like that. Anyway, we had two meetings on Thursday, the 24th of January, one was at Gaffney Lane Elementary School, and Tom O'Brien was the cat member that attended that one, and I volunteered to attend the meeting at the fire station, at the, for the Canema Neighborhood Association, and Krista and I had a rather lively discussion, and we had quite a bit of interest, we also had a little bit of land use planning 101. One of the new Canema neighbors is not super familiar with the process, and so we were talking about urban growth boundaries, how those get set, where the, how the lands get designated, so I'm sure everybody was bored to tears, but it was, at least she got her answer. So, and we have, we have a few more coming up, there's a workshop coming up on the, is it 27th of February, I want to say?
Sounds familiar.
For the, another open house where we're inviting the public in to come and talk about their desires for South End, and looking at values and core, core values and values, and things we do like and don't like about South End, and what we'd like to see changed.
See if I can find that date.
I know, I have, I have it, my purse is under my, under the table.
It is the 27th of February.
I think it is the 27th, that's what I'm recalling, so, any of the planning commissioners that would like to attend, that would be terrific. So do we have any agenda items that are coming up for the February 11th?
I have one other communication. Tomorrow night, 6:00 here, is when, at least, that's the email I got from Alita, saying that the McLaughlin Project Phase Two Gateway, North End Gateway meeting is, which is what the ODOT is planning on doing with McLaughlin Avenue from the Gladstone Bridge to the 205 Overpass. They recognize that as a gateway to Oregon City, it's the first thing people see in Oregon City, and they're having a meeting here to talk about possible concepts, and you can cast your vote, pro or con, about certain elements of it, and it's, you know, if you want to see something other than a straight gray road, then this is your chance to weigh in on it, and in a year and a half, when it's not a straight gray road anymore and you don't like it, oh, well, because it'll be 50 years before it's touched again, so...
I did ask whether there would be any opportunity to vote online, and unfortunately, there will not be, but there will be a video of what's being presented that someone could look at after the fact.
All right, I think that's all that I have.
February 11th?
February 11th.
Will we be having a meeting?
You know, there was, there was a request to have a work session about the noticing, we may try and do that if we don't have anything on that night, because I think we're going to run into, isn't there another holiday, what's the second one?
President's Day.
What, is that the 21st?
It's the 18th, I believe.
Would note that you continued file CP 1201 and DP 1201 to February 11th.
25th.
Was it 25th?
25th, yeah.
The staff report has 11th. We changed that.
Yeah, the staff report says the 11th, Damon, as you, you know, if your mic was getting feedback, said the February 25th.
All right.
He was right on that. All right, seeing no other business before the Commission, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Robert?
You want to second it?
Second it.
Oh, I'll second it, yeah.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.